Closed session for today, January 25th. Item pursuant to government code 54957.6, conference with county designated labor negotiators Judy Hawkins and Shay Johnson regarding the following employee organizations: Calaveras Management Union, Calaveras Supervisors Union.
Good morning, and welcome back to the regular scheduled meeting. We met earlier for closed session, and at this time I would like to take any public comment for closed session.
There is no online public comment.
Okay, and clerk, report out.
Report out of closed session for today, January 25th. Item one, pursuant to government code 54957.6, conference with county designated labor negotiators Judy Hawkins and Shay Johnson regarding the following employee organizations: Calaveras Management Union, Calaveras Supervisors Union. No reportable action taken.
Thank you. At this time, we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Supervisor Stoppa.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, the one nation, under God, in the great God of the world.
Next, we have staff announcement, and I believe Ms. Medina would like to speak. Are there any other staff announcements?
No, not that I see at this time. You have.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair, respective board members, Leo Von Laan, Deputy Clerk of the Board, and our Calaveras community, Lisa Medina, Environmental Management Agency. Today, I would like to start off by thanking our community for adopting our animals from animal services. We have had a record break in January with several adoptions, and we expect to send more of our fur babies home to their fur over homes with our Calaveras community. January has also been a very good month for our kitty adoptions, and adopted so far in January include Kyra, Atilla, Princess, Jerry, Abby, Fred, George, Barney, and Harrison. In February, we are planning on having a Valentine's Day adoption event. More details to follow. Our last announcement may be a little early, but will take place in March. It's going to be our first Focus and Animal Services Free Microchip and Rabies Clinic to be held here at the Government Center on Saturday, March 12. We will continue to support our community with these free events, and Focus is working on several more for the year 2022. Thank you, Focus, and all our animal service volunteers. We cannot do this without your support. Thank you. Have a great day.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you, Lisa. And there's no other staff comments?
There's no further staff comments.
Okay, just want to make sure no one was leaving their hand online. Okay, next is general public comment. Is there any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Board and is not posted on the consent or regular agenda, may be addressed during the public comment period? California law prohibits the Board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. Is there any public comment?
There is no online public comment.
Okay. Next is consent agenda. Is there any board member that wishes to pull an item from consent? See none. Is there any public comment on consent agenda?
I do not see any staff or public request.
Okay. With that, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Moved by Supervisor Toponelli. Is there a second?
Second, Madam Chair.
Seconded by Supervisor Stoppa. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Just to confirm, we have motion by Supervisor Toponelli, seconded by Supervisor Stoppa, and all ayes.
Correct. I don't see any one objection to that. Next up is regular agenda. Item number eight. Clerk?
Item eight, resolution by Human Resources. Adopt a resolution approving a COVID-19 paid sick leave policy with the effective dates of January 25th, 2022, to June 30th, 2022, or until the state of California or the federal government create COVID-19-related leave, whichever is earlier. Ms. Hawkins?
Good morning, all board. Judy Hawkins, Human Resources and Risk Management. I apologize, I'm not a panelist. Can everybody hear me? Okay, so today I bring before you a request for COVID-19 paid sick leave of 80 hours for employees that meet the criteria to take the leave, which is basically they have to quarantine, isolate, or they are seeking a diagnosis, which means they are waiting for test results of COVID-19, and then of course, if they have adverse reactions from a COVID-19 vaccine or booster. And the purpose of bringing this policy to you now is that we have had an extreme surge of cases among employees over the past several months. For example, in October, we only had six cases, and November 9, December 6, and we are now up to 56 cases just for the month of January. And to encourage employees to stay home if they have symptoms while they're seeking a diagnosis, that is the purpose of this leave. It makes it easier for new employees or employees that don't have the sick leave, because what we're finding that is happening is if an employee catches COVID at work, or we can track Human Resources does all the COVID tracing to exclude employees from work who have been exposed. During that process, we also make sure if we can link an exposure positive to another employee within the workplace, or while they're conducting their normal duties, then we place them on paid administrative leave. So having this leave will make it equitable for everybody who is currently being off work or other things due to COVID. Can I answer any questions?
Is there any questions by board members? Supervisor Garmendy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Judy, Judy Hawkins, when did the federal and state leave policy expire?
The end of September in 2021.
Really? Okay. Until we haven't had one, what have we been doing since? Sorry?
So if employees are exposed at work, we put them on a paid administrative leave. If an employee comes to work sick and we have to send them home and they do not have any sick leave available, then we put them on a paid administrative leave. And so having a policy such as this makes it more equitable for all the employees if they need to stay home due to symptoms of COVID-19.
I think my question is, is this, are we being equitable? I mean, January 25th, is that the right date to start? Or should we go back to January 1st? And what are the impacts? Because we're sending people home, right?
So, we do have, some employees have been placed on paid administrative leave. SEIU has requested that we start the policy December 27th, when employees were coming back from the Christmas holiday. It's just finding that right time. Like I said, just for January, we have had 56 employees test positive. We have had other employees that were exposed and had to stay home due to the exposure. If they were exposed at work, we did put them on paid administrative leave. So the impact would be if we went back, say, January 1st, because we came back to the office on January 3rd from the New Year's holiday, and we would be replacing the sick leave that employees took for the COVID purposes, and then we had a minimal amount of employees that were out and did not have sick leave available. So the impact, you know, I could agree, starting January 1st may be a good idea because of all of the cases, but that is up to the Board.
Yeah, I just, I feel bad for folks. I mean, you know, we're making the rules that they've got to stay out a certain amount of time, and there's so many complex pieces to this. It's hard to figure out who's on first base on any given day. It seemed like January 1st might be, or January 3rd, when we came back, might be fair. I just want to be fair. We're sending people home and telling them when they can come back, when they feel fine, and we're using their sick days. That's all my questions I have. Thank you.
Any other board comment or question? Do you have none? I'll go to public comment.
Yes, we do have one public comment. Andrea?
Good morning. Surprise, surprise. I'm coming to that. Can I ask you anything?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. I'm coming to you guys, albeit virtually, just to be surprised to speak in support of this agenda item. Since the COVID leave expired the end of September, there's been a ton of confusion amongst the membership regarding sick leave. As a result, we found it was more advantageous for workers to come to work ill, and we're expecting others because they didn't have time on the bill, or they would get paid admin leave. In other instances, workers who did the right thing and called in and reported illnesses found their balances drained. And adding a COVID leave bank would solve a lot of these issues. And thank you Supervisor Garmendy, you hit the nail on the head. There's only one thing that would make this resolution better and help a more significant number of workers. And Judy, I thought a lot about this, and this policy really should be made retroactive to when the state COVID leave bank expired. It should be made effective to October 1st, 2021. The number of COVID infections, I know Ms. Hawkins did talk about it, the total number from October 1 to December 31 was 21, and January alone has had 56. And this doesn't include the people who have had a quarantine or fall within any of the other categories. And it doesn't make sense to penalize those who've had to take leave for the four months between October 1st and today's date. Retroactivity is the right thing to do. And thank you for considering this agenda item, and I ask you to consider my recommendation.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
There's no other online comment.
Okay. She now will bring it back to the Board with the motion.
Is there, Ms. Hawkins, is there a reason that we have not considered retroactive? Is there appetite, the Board, to discuss this? Mr. Chairman, any other questions that you brought up?
So, if the Board chooses to make this retroactive, then we will go back and contact those employees that were out due to COVID exposures. I do not, I personally think that it would be a good idea to start the beginning of January, but it is up to the Board.
I think it is a good idea, January 1st.
I'll make a motion in stating, you know, as the recommendation is here, but let's go retroactive to the first of this year. At least we can take care of part of the issue with that. Is that clear enough, Ms. Edwards?
It's clear to me. The only thing I might recommend or that might make the most sense would be that if it coincides with the beginning of a pay period, which I don't know precisely what day that Would it have been the first, Ms. Hawkins? So it would, so 1-122 to 1-1422 is a pay period, so if we went to 1-1, then it will coincide with the pay period. Okay. And yes, then I think the motion is clear.
All right. Thank you. So I stand by my motion. Madam Chair, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, so just to clarify, we have a motion by Supervisor Stoppa to approve the resolution with the modification of the start effective date as of January 1st, 2022, and seconded by Supervisor Garmendy, with all ayes.
Okay. Okay. Excuse me. And next is regular agenda, item number nine. Clerk?
Item number nine, resolution brought by the Administration Office. Adopt a resolution of intention to form the Central Sierra Broadband Unity Utility Zone Consortium.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board, Summer Nacatero, Administration. I have before you a resolution to join what they're calling Central Sierra Broadband Utility Zone Consortium. Previously, it was the Central Sierra Connect Broadband Consortium, which is no longer in existence. I'm recommending that we join this. Its main function is to seek funding. I see it beneficial in that it's our partners that we border with as far as broadband is concerned. I think it's important that we're at the table seeing what everybody else is doing in our areas where we may be able to cooperate and get the most benefit out of coordinating our efforts. So this would put us in the same group before with Alpine, Amador, Topeka, and Mariposa Counties. Any questions?
Any questions from the Board? Supervisor Stoppa? Yes? No?
Well, this discussion's come up a few times in my Central Sierra Economic Development District. I'm just curious who brought this board?
So, I have spoken with several people in the office, as well as Supervisor Garmendy and Kathy Galino, and the agreement that we have isn't that we're looking for necessarily the funding that they're searching. The agreement is just to make sure that we're a part of the conversation as far as what their plans are and how we may be able to work together. And so I know there were some issues in the past with the groups that we were involved in, and so I think that if we go into it knowing that we also supervise our Garmendys on the Golden State Connect Authority, and have that as an opportunity as well, just making sure that we don't miss any information or opportunities with broadband, considering how big the scope of this work is going to be.
Right. And we have a plan going through Central Sierra Economic Development District right now for another, I mean, there's multiple avenues with this. But at the same time, some of the concern going forward is, I would ask if we've addressed with us going at it from multiple angles with the consortium, Golden State Authority, and everything else, sometimes that will disqualify us or hinder our efforts as we move forward. Mr. Garmendy?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Stoppa, and Madam Chair, if I may, and thank you, Summer. This was bunted to staff to sort of develop what we want to do. I have, I continue to have concerns. A consortium is fine. If we decide to move towards a JPA, I'm going to want to know what's in that, because I don't want to start encumbering our accounting. At the Golden State Connect Authority, we had an executive committee meeting last week, and things are starting to come together, but the state's still coming up with their rules on what they want to use their billion dollars for. The feds are still coming up with their rules. It is, it is really very fluid, and anybody who tells you they know exactly how this is going to work is making it up. And so, you know, we're fortunate with the Golden State Connect and that we've got really good partners on putting out the broadband. We've got a formula, and as the data comes in from the CPUC and the feds, we'll be able to plug them into the variables and figure out where the right places to do things are. As far as it impacts Calaveras, you know, one of the variables is going to be what is available, what are the resources available to match, to bring things forward. So, you know, we've talked about taking some of the RF funds, maybe setting aside for broadband. This may be a pot of money that we can apply to the variable, as one of the variables, to come in to help us fill things out. You know, basically, the formula we're working on with Golden State Connect is 100% debt financing for a project. So if a volcano, or a caltel, or AT&amp;T, or a county, or a consortium came in and brought money in, that would reduce the amount of debt, which means you could do more. We all know that, down payments on household time. So it's fluid. I don't think this is going to hurt us as it stands today. I don't know how it's all going to work out, but it seems like, and I agree with Summer, it's something we might as well do.
Yeah, and I understand. With that, I just caution that we watch our step as we proceed.
I couldn't agree more.
Thank you for the information, Mr. Garmendy.
Supervisor Calloway?
I had brought this up at Board, and there wasn't the support because of Supervisor Garmendy's position with RCRC. And I feel like the more opportunities that we have to plug possible holes, that we should do it, and to be part of our neighbors, and I think it's important that we, and I said that when I brought this up a couple of months or so ago, that we need to be partners with our neighbors, anything to do with broadband. I'm really, like most of you, tired of hearing talk, 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 and nothing happens, but until all the fingers are out there and looking at all the possible opportunities, this is just another possible opportunity. And the private sector has to be part of this. I mean, government can say what we want, but unless we want to flip the bill, it has to be partnership, and this is another opportunity along with RCRC and whatever else is out there, I think we should participate. So I'm glad that I have Supervisor Garmendy's support on doing this.
What was that for?
Any other Board comment?
Yeah, I will say this, that other than Topeka County, we already partner in JPAs. This is not a JPA, but it could become one with the other counties involved here, and possibly it could be another JPA. Mountain Valley EMS at Topeka, we might have talks with them, could go into that. So it's not, and that works. Mountain Valley EMS provides the ambulance service and EMS service for these counties, so I'm in favor of moving forward with this and that partnership.
So with that, then I guess you bring it to a motion or the public comment.
There is no online public comment?
Okay, and there's no one in the room? Bring it back. Is there a motion?
I'll move this item.
Motion by Supervisor Calloway. Is there a second?
I guess Maria's going to beat me up to submission, and I'll second it.
Seconded by Supervisor Garmendy. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we have a motion made by Supervisor Calloway, seconded by Supervisor Garmendy, followed by aye, all ayes.
And I want a workers' comp claim for the physical assault.
Thank you, Summer.
Thank you.
Next, we have agenda item number 10. Clerk?
Item 10 is an informational item brought by Public Works. Receive a presentation on the draft 2022 Calaveras County Department of Public Works Five-Year Capital Improvement Program.
Good morning. I'm going to share the screen.
Good morning, Mr. Passenger.
Good morning. Let's see here. Can you see that? There it is.
Yes.
All right, so this is the capital improvement program presentation. Let me introduce to you Jen Ellis, who's sitting here with me. She's a senior engineer, the person responsible for pretty much putting this program together throughout the years. We have currently with our engineering group, or we had, we had six people working on delivering the role of these projects. We're down to five. Chantel left. You may know some of our other project managers that are working on the CIP, Jen Herndon, Lori Dodge, Kelly Zanizer, and Jacob Lyle. They're not in the room right now, but those are the ones that are responsible for delivering this work. Okay, now. There we go. All right. Here is the purpose of the CIP presentation. Most of all, this is the county's program, and at this point, this presentation is intended to elicit feedback from you so that we can have an understanding of your desires. It's also our presentation to you showing what we've determined to be the best way to move forward with the limited funding that we have. So that's our beginning. Let me explain to you what that picture is. Those are gabion walls used as headwalls to protect, to protect slopes. You can see that particular structure on the Wind Mine Road. So sources of funding for our program, we have two different types. There's the discretionary revenue. Discretionary revenues are used mostly for all of our maintenance work. That includes the maintenance of our equipment. We use our discretionary revenue to purchase materials. We pay the salaries of our road department. We do, we purchase our equipment with discretionary revenue, and we pay our utilities. All of our operational costs are covered by discretionary revenue. A very small amount of that discretionary revenue is used in our CIP funds to fund some of our projects. Most of the work that we do as far as the CIP is concerned comes from restricted revenue. The federal grants, most of that funds our bridge programs. The roads maintenance or rehabilitation account is our SB 1 funding. We have PG&E settlement funding that hopefully we finish using up this year. It might leak a little bit into the next year, depending if there's any funding left over. So that's the bulk of the funding for the CIP. So that's the bulk of the funding for the CIP. Let's see here. Yeah, let's go to the next one. So for the next five years, you can see the amount of funding is quite a bit. It sounds like a large number. It's going down from our presentation in the last year, but the reason that it's going down is because we've been delivering some of the projects, and that revenue funding is ongoing. For example, disaster recovery projects are being completed. We have, then, we've completed all of them except for one remaining one, the slide at Railroad Platform at 26. We're also completing the PG&E settlement funds. We spent a lot of that in the last few years, working on the roads. This year, we should hopefully spend most of it. There might be a little bit that leaks over, depending on what may be left over after we complete this year's work. So this chart is just a little summary of the projects that we've completed. It compares with what was programmed last year. And for the most part, you can see what's going on there with the items that were completed. There were a few items that we were hoping to complete last year. We didn't do it. We didn't get to finish those. So we'll be starting up immediately, right after this item. Before you is the board item approving the plans and specs for a couple of those projects there. Some of those that you see are dependent. For example, the Murphy's lighting district is dependent on when the governor's COVID emergency declaration is lifted. Once that's done, the rideaway plan will have to be returned to us. The outdoor seating will have to be removed so that we can go in there and start doing the work along the road. And of course, the last item there is the wagon trail project. That is currently underway. You may have seen that the contractor is currently removing trees. They're trying to get those trees out of there before the birds start to nest in there. So the contractor hopes to have that project then completed at the end of the year. So that is our hope too.
Mr. Packard, can you go back to that last slide?
Yes.
Um, there's a pretty open number one there where it says resurfacing in Copperopolis and Valley Springs.
Yes.
Says construction started in October 21.
Well, that, the plans, the work on getting that project going pretty much started in October 21. Putting together the plans, trying to see what the cost estimates were going to be, the internal work.
So the, let's just say the Valley Springs and our streets that were under SB1 funds such as Garner and Kirby?
Yes.
And those were on the list for last year?
Yes, sir. Those are the ones that, right after this presentation, the plan specs and estimates are being presented to you so that we can go forward with soliciting the bids for that work.
Thank you.
Thank you. So then, these are some of the highlights for what was completed last year. The Bursary left turn lane at Copper Pond. That was, there was a high collision rate there. That was a safety project that needed to be completed. That's the picture on the cover of the presentation. The left turn lanes were completed last year. They were successful. Let's see here. I, we received a couple of awards. Right now, I had them sitting at home on the desk, but because we're showing the PowerPoint presentation, you can't see them. Perhaps at the end of this, I'll try to show you the awards that we've received. So this program pretty much started with a a report that we had prepared by MCE. We have limited resources, so we have to work smarter with the limited resources. So there was a report prepared in December of 2019 by MCE. It's a pavement management update. And that identified the pavement condition for the county roads. So the effort there is to try to, excuse me? Okay, the effort there is to try to extend the service life of roads that are in decent shape. Those can be extended in a cheaper manner. Trying to preserve those roads what's better with the less expensive treatment, for example, the microsurface. We also have very poor roads that we still need to maintain. And those roads, we just have to tackle in smaller segments. It's very possible that if we were to fix one of those poor roads, it could eat up quite a bit of the funding in one season. But we're trying to preserve as much as we can and hit as many areas as we can every year. That report that I mentioned that was prepared in December of 2019 is a very high-level report, and those estimates were very rough. As we got started last year, looking deeper into what needed to be done, we were able to develop more refined estimates. That's part of the effort that was done last year with the Garner and Kirby and Silver Rapids. And those projects were originally just intended to have a microsurface on them with a certain cost estimate. But as we started looking closer at those roads, they needed a lot of repairs. It's not simply a microsurface job anymore. So we had to go back, redo our estimates. We work on the plan specs and estimates to get that project out. So we kind of had to regroup and pivot a little bit on the approach to fixing those roads. The other thing that we try to do is to keep the work with a contractor hitting a certain geographic area to keep those mobility costs down and try to put as much funding on paving and fixing roads as opposed to paying a contractor to go around to different spots all over the county. So the PowerPoint presentation has the charts, the group, the charts that show some of the problems that are happening in the coming year. But on the board package that was uploaded, we have the entire CIP program with all of the projects shown in there for your review, as well as the cost and planning for the years for when the projects will be improved. So these are the projects that are being recommended this coming year for this construction season. They are a continuation of the past year's recommendations. So what was recommended in years past and was accepted we're continuing on on that pattern. Some of the projects that were shown in past years where there's unknown, let's say, beginning location and location, like the ones here that you see various, we worked during the year to refine exactly where those locations are. And then we have our projects moving forward within specified locations. And those are years, we continue on the pattern of trying to make recommendations for the future years based on geographic areas that we got to hit. So it starts going back down to the San Andres area, and then we'll go back around in future years to other areas of the county. I want to mention CSAs for a moment. That's, CSAs are shown in the CIP with the effort to pave some CSA roads. In the past, we've tried different methods for outreach to the public, to the residents. One year, we sent 3,700 flyers. Last year, we had a little onsite survey tool. COVID has made the meetings difficult, so we keep trying to get information out and feedback in from the CSAs. Those past efforts with the survey tools and flyers, we received very low response rate, which kind of happened typical throughout the years. But we'll still keep working. The main thing is that next month, we intend to go back to the board with a presentation on how we wish to move forward with the care of the CSAs. So this is the summary of our past efforts. We continue to work. We continue to eliminate disaster recovery projects, finishing them up. This year, we have one left. We have some PG&E settlement funded work that we hope to complete this year. We, our, we mentioned here utility partners. We're working so much better with our utility partners. It's, it's, I don't know how to put it to you than to say, our partnership has been greatly improved. In, I believe, 2024, we're giving the utilities a chance to finish their work in a CSA. And I think in 2024 is the next time that we go back into CSA1 to finish some of that work. And of course, our funding is always a problem, but we just continue to work smarter. Now, regards to what we hope to do in coming years, we're still looking for funding opportunities. There is the ATP grant that's coming up. Hopefully, we submit something for that. There's a couple of projects that we're looking at, and we're working with COG. There is the HSIP grant application that will be coming up soon. We have a Clean California grant that was just awarded last Thursday. And that Clean California grant is, what should be coming out of that, that will be some entrance features to some of our towns like San Andres, Murphy's. Our senior engineer will spend this year planning already for next year's CIP. There has to be a more refined scope of work and cost estimates made. So we'll have to look at the payment condition for the future roads that we need to take care of. There may be an asset management system that we hope to implement, but that, there's planning that needs to be done there. So there's a lot of work that's being done with a small, a very small group of people. Okay. Let's see. There was a 2022 construction, there it is. The schedule that we hope to keep for this coming year. This is construction season. You'll see that some items, Phase 3, Buick Fire Phase 3, may leak into next year, but it depends on what's remaining funds based on the work that we're doing. Now, that chart kind of shows the percentages there of the different projects that we have, or different types of projects. The reason that we have such a big 63% there in improvements, almost looks like a Pac-Man there, is because wagon trail is over $20 million worth of that work. So for future years, we have the roadside safety and signing audit work that intends to, we intend to replace our signs. We have high reflectivity on those signs. And our bridges, there's one bridge that we hope to complete this year. Like I said already, only one project left for the disaster recovery projects. We still are working on the Valley Springs improvement project to work around the school there to make some improvements. So that's, that is, yeah. So this is our, our presentation. Let's see here. What happened? I'm going backwards. Okay. Organizing direction. I am not, that is pushing the wrong buttons. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Robert. I'm going to bring it back to the board. Are there any board comment questions? Supervisor Topenauer?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Morning, Robert.
Morning.
I have a couple of questions for you. Mountain Ranch Road, we just completed that project less than a year ago. We waited like eight years to get it completed. And they've already cut into the road in front of the hospital. And there's been steel plates there for the last couple of weeks. When they, when they finish that work, we need to make sure that that road is back to the new pavement that we just put in. And we don't have a dip there or overbite there when they finish. For the remainder of the years of that road, that little cut they put in there is done correctly. And we don't have an issue with it being the fact that that's a brand-new road. I want to point that out to you.
Yes, sir.
And the other issue that I want to bring up is Burson Road. They were, they supposed to start and finish that in October. They started it, they never finished it. And then I was told it was going to be winterized, but nothing's been done to it. And you can start to see the effects of some of the weather we've been having on it. So I want to make sure it's not going to cost us any extra money because they failed to complete it and winterize it when they left it. That any issues that need to be redone, it's on their cost. Contractor rehired to do that job and not something that we did. If you drive that road, you can see there is starting to be some effects because it wasn't winterized. And there's a lot of places along that road where they didn't restripe it. So you go through sections, and it's been foggy, that there's no striping. So we need to make sure we're safe on that road until they get it completed.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Supervisor Stapper?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just looking at this agenda packet, and your presentation's not included. You know, it's good to be able to visualize and see the roads that are on the CIP list as we're reviewing our agenda before we come into the meeting. Because I go back to, you know, I have on my other screen there, oh, sorry, the December 2020 presentation that we voted on that, the CIP. And it's good to see the roads that are actually going to be worked on. When, when we, we see these presentations going before us of what the schedule is, I, I do like to see the, the, the presentation as a part of the agenda packet before it comes to us, Mr. Packenger.
I have it.
No, that's part of the next item in our agenda packet.
No.
Uh, it's labeled 10 and 11. I, I went through, I read it page by page. There's only two pages for item 10, unless my thing didn't download it.
Also, just as a reminder, this is just an informational item, so the board's not going to...
Absolutely. An informational item, I like to be able to see the data that's informational.
Oh, no, no, that's fair. I just want, I, you said something about voting on it, and I just wanted to make sure everyone knew it was informational.
My mistake if I said vote. But there's a few other roads I would like to bring up as we move forward. Um, you know, some, something that's been on my mind is, you know, with the redistricting process, Ms. Fullendorf in the past has gotten multiple calls on Hunt Road. I, when you have an opportunity, Robert, I would like to, you know, get a presentation here on what level Hunt Road is considered, um, when it, when it comes to our priority list, and I would like to have a longer discussion about that. Also, I, I have a question as to the weed abatement for the sides of the road. Has Public Works picked that up from agriculture?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, uh, is that being done yet?
Yes, they're getting, they're getting training, they're getting equipment, they're purchasing, uh, the materials, all that's occurring right now.
Okay, so they haven't started doing it yet, they're just getting ready to start doing it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So with that, we put some extra money aside in the budget this year for, for Milton Road to, to, uh, get the weeds on the sides of the road a little bit farther back than normal. Um, all in all, I'm getting calls from multiple ranchers across the, uh, the county, that are concerned that we're going to use the right type of, uh, re-abatement poison, whatever you call it, you know, we don't want to use the wrong stuff.
Pervicide.
Pervicide, thank you. And, uh, as we move forward, I want special attention paid to the side of the road on, on Milton. And also, uh, I would like to sit down with you and talk with the sheriff about possibly getting help from the jail crew at the same time, when it's convenient, so that, that way we aren't necessarily taken away from work for the other, for the other districts for that road. And also, the trash on the sides of Hunt and Milton Road are horrible every time we clean up. So, uh, I would like to have a longer conversation about how we can utilize the jail crew along with, uh, Public Works so that we can give that trash... Thank you.
If I may, sorry, just another one more time, just to clear up confusion, um, this is, the presentation is part of this agenda item. If you click on it, it was a link, and it just opened in a new window. So you're, you're absolutely correct, Supervisor Stoppa, if you just scrolled through the agenda, it, it wasn't there, but if you just clicked on it, then it was linked.
Yes, that, I believe we had, we had uploaded all the materials. The, the whole program should have been there with the roads. So if you need a copy or something, Supervisor Stoppa, I, I will send that to you, okay?
Could you forward it to all of us, Robert? Because I don't have it either.
I don't have it either.
I do. It's actually, the item was too large, so it is linked. So if you, you would have to click on the, where it mentions it there. So you have to click on the actual verbiage there, but we can forward it to all of you.
Yeah, could you, I can't find them right now. Maybe next time it's got the case, just note it clear in the staff that we need a code there, because I read over it. Supervisor Coway.
Mr. Packenger, I have a question. I understand what you said about, uh, treatment on roads unfair or at risk versus poor or failed shape, but the poor or failed shape roads will continue to, um, get worse, and we spend more of our energy because we get a better return on doing the fair or at-risk roads. At what point do we start managing the poor or failed shape roads?
Well, those poor or failed shaped roads are not totally neglected. We try to, uh, repair as much as we can through maintenance and then tackle those roads, um, doing some improvements to those in smaller segments. An example of that would be how we're tackling Oberon's Ferry Road. That, that's, instead of what was originally, originally thought to do a microsurface on that whole thing, we have to tackle it in smaller segments and do some base repair and then some microsurface. It's just a much more complicated, um, effort. But they're not neglected, we keep working at those.
I mean, I hear what you're saying. I'm, I leave it to your expertise, but it's hard to explain why we're making repairs on roads that are fair while roads that are not in good condition but have heavy traffic or are a major collector, um, are in poor shape. A editorial comment. Uh, the other question I have is a couple of years ago, I thought Public Works was going to combine money, the road monies, and put them in a specific district so that they, they, we could do a lot more work within that district and then rotate road funds to each of the districts. And looking at the projects that you have, it appears that we're going back to the old system of doing a little bit in every district. I had trouble following where Public Works was on that now.
Okay, that, the way we presented this program was just a continuation of what had been done in past years. There was a concerted effort to hit one particular, uh, district or a couple of districts, and then it moved on to other districts. Some of the roads that you might see, for example, in District One, are represented in this year's program, uh, are to complete what was to be done last year, and we're actually using last year's funding to complete those roads. This year's funding, we've moved on to the other districts. So we're showing everything that's happening in a year, but some of that is to finish off what was to be done last year, and then we, we just keep moving around.
May I follow up, Ms. Fullendorf?
Yes, I was gonna ask him a question, but go ahead. Yes, go.
Um, ju- just to be clear, I, I, I completely agree with what Ms. Coway's position is. We were trying to keep these, uh, jobs that rolled over to this year at the same time as, let's say, Garner and Kirby in my district should have been done at the same time as CSA one roads. The reason we're saying that is, is transportation equipment is expensive. And when we hire out for contractors, we can get a more, more miles of paved road for a lesser price if they're working in the same area as opposed to moving their equipment back and forth across the county. So I think she's asking if we're going back to the old ways or if we're still thinking about it pragmatically.
Yeah, we're, we're still thinking geographically. That's still the effort.
If, if I may, and, and, Robert, I, if you go back to your, your PowerPoint presentation to year 23, 24, you, you look at that, and that's going forward. It, it shows most of the work being done around San Andreas because that's the way it was, we did it several years ago, and it's that time coming up. You fell behind in some of the projects, so it looks like it's not the same, but, but you have continued that program as far as what I saw. When you look at 22, 23, and 23, 24, they're basically all in the same areas that, that the work is being done. You may not get it all completed because of weather or what have you, but from what I see, if you go back to those slides, it'll show that we're still progressing that way. From what I see, that's my, my observation.
Yeah, my only concern is because of the delays, and I know you can't control the weather, Robert, but is that going to impact the, these plans? Because what we're seeing to coordinate each of these areas of these districts to get the roads done, but then the more delays that happen, how, how long are we going to see those pushed out? Because then the public's going to come back and say, well, you're not following their schedule. Or how, how do we... It's going to impact, I think that's where Supervisor Stoppa is coming from. It's going to impact these, these recommendations of projects.
That is true. That's always the danger with anything that we do within the construction season. For example, here, who would have predicted that October, we would have had all those rains that we had? October is normally a pretty hot month, it's Indian summertime. And that, uh, you, that mess with the schedule tremendously. So we're always at the mercy of, of the weather. We keep trying to move forward. Um, there are other factors that, that affect how, how much of this we do, and that's, how bids come in, what the contractors want. There's just many factors. So, um, this is the plan, we try to achieve the plan. Unfortunately, sometimes there are some things that are beyond our control to hit every point on this plan 100%.
Supervisor, again, may we?
Only if that conversation has expired. I, mine's kind of a different day, so if you guys are good with it. Uh, Robert, I was not aware, thank you very much for the presentation. I was not aware that we had, uh, moved weed abatement on the roads from Department of Agriculture to, uh, Public Works, uh, which is fine. I just want to make sure that, um, uh, under the new, you know, agriculture's already been really good at looking out for environmental sensitive areas and where people request not to have the roads sprayed. They've always been good, so I just want to make sure that data transfers over to Public Works and you guys are aware, and, and, and have a process for accounting for that also. Because people get, I mean, nobody really likes spraying the side of the road, but we have to do it for safety reasons. But people who ask not to be included in that, we need to respect that, um, or they get really upset. So just make sure that information transfers, and they've done a good job historically, and I'm sure you will continue to do a good job also.
Yes, sir, that is the intent. We're, we're rolling that information now.
Because people get really upset, so, thank you.
Are there any other board questions or comments? Okay, um, seeing that there's none, I have some questions, Robert. Um, one question, we briefly talked about this yesterday. So on the presentation, um, CSAs are mentioned, and I recognize that these are paving programs, that there's other CSAs out there that still have other work that need to be done. So how are we communicating with the public outside of this current presentation on what their expectations of their CSAs? So is there a separate CSA, CIP, or how do we weave this into getting the message out to the public of what work is getting done in the dollar amounts that, similar to what you've shown us today?
Okay. In a month, we will be going back to the board of supervisors for the CSA presentation. Um, it'll cover the work that we hope to do within the CSAs and actually look at, um, uh, the, uh, we will have a discussion on increasing the level of effort for some of these CSAs. We know that some CSAs wish to have a higher level of effort, but the revenue that's collected limits us tremendously. So, um, I hope to have a few scenarios where, where you can have at, at least, um, ballpark figures for what it might take to change the level of effort, uh, for example, on Stelling Way. Um, so that will happen in February. We will advertise that, get the word out to the folks so that we can have a meaningful dialogue with that. Um, and you, throughout the years, we've had various ways of communicating with the CSAs. Um, this COVID thing has us a little bit with our hands tied, we really can't meet. But, uh, staff here has reached out, and there's been a, a little online survey tool. We don't get much of a response, but we work with what we have. Um, perhaps there's a better way to get the word out to the folks so that they can provide some input to us. So that's, there is, uh, that kind of thing that happens once a year, but we also have the MyCalavera system, the onsite system, so that if there's ever, uh, need for some sort of maintenance potholes or something, brushing, or there's some clog, culvert or something, the, the residents can go to the MyCalavera's website, input the information, the location, and actually track what is going on with the service request. So it provides a pretty good closed feedback loop there. Um, so those are a couple of ways that we, we communicate with the CSA folks, just like we communicate to the other residents throughout the county with our, uh, uh, maintained roads. As far as trying to get financial information, anyone could call here to the office, and we'll let them know, send them the printout of what's left in the bank. They can see exactly what's going on. Um, there's, if, if they need any more information, we have staff here that's willing to help them out and give them whatever it is that they need. It, we don't need any, um, how, how to put it? There doesn't have to be anything more formal than a phone call, and, uh, we'll get the information to them.
Thank you. I, um, I have some more questions, but I saw Supervisor Stoppa had it laid on.
I was just gonna follow up on, uh, when we did CSA one, we did a Meller. Our Public Works did a Meller to all residents within, within the CSA one boundaries. You know, let them know how, how to give their input, and then also the, uh, uh, study that we did on all the roads in the county included the CSAs. So it took the information where the wants of the people and the actual information on the levels of the roads, and then we prioritize based on that. So I was pretty happy with the way, uh, that was done back in 2020, 2020. You know, a little over a year and a half ago. Just, uh, halfway through the year was when it was done, so, oh, a year and a half ago.
Our, uh, the people that put forth that effort to get the word out, we're all still here, we're gonna continue doing that kind of effort to get the word out.
Um, of, of, um, the other question that I have is, how did, when you're talking about priority, how are you selecting the priorities in Public Works, especially with new funding that's coming down, um, with infrastructure and leveraging what's currently and in the future as we look at 2023, 24, 25, with the funding that we're seeing talked about out there? Um, and one I'm just gonna bring up because, well, up until the redistricting, I got three, had three bridges in my district. Um, I get to share them with Marita now. Um, leveraging those kinds of funds with the CIP and roads, because that's a huge inter-commerce roadway between the two counties. Um, and then there's also many smaller bridges across the county that need just maintenance, not necessarily huge, huge, um, construction, but just day-to-day maintenance, that we, um, don't really get that funding. that we don't really get that funding through other ways unless we get in the Caltrans bridge and bridge funding. Um, that happened only, what, three to five years? Um, so how how does that work, Robert?
Okay, for the routine bridge program, there's an item in the CIP called the Bridge uh, BPMP, the Bridge Program Maintenance, Maintenance. Um, and Caltrans does provide uh, funding for that work. The work is identified through inspections that Caltrans structural engineers perform. They do that on a yearly basis. So there's a program in place. Um, we apply for that. There are certain cycles that that occur, and when it's our turn, we'll get the funding to do some of that preventative maintenance. Uh, so that's how that's handled. As far as doing replacement of some structures, we have to apply for those, submit the application to Caltrans. That's the HBP program. I understand, uh, listening to to the updates that it seems that this last funding from the federal government put money into the HBP program. So there may be additional opportunities for other structures to be replaced. And that's one of the duties that Jen does, and she's always looking for funding opportunities as part of her planning work that she does.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then this is just me being new. Could this, I don't, I think I came in after last year with um, with a lot of the conversations from the CIP from 2020 and 2021. But 30 miles, is that normal? Or is it usually less than, uh, how do you calculate? Um, how how do you calculate your highlights of miles versus the either total roads around the county or your current project? And could that seem a little low with how many roads we have? I mean, how, what is that, how do you calculate that matrix?
Well, in this case, all we did was make the measurement of exactly uh, surface treatments and repairs that we did on the road. Um, if you're looking at that compared to what was done last year or years past, the last presentation showed quite a bit more mileage, but there were two years, about two years worth of roadwork that was collected and presented in one number. And striping and delineators were added to that number. We're not adding striping and delineators to the number of that that I should, I am presenting there to you. We're just doing the surface treatment. Um, or we could have a lot of miles showing up if we just show what's done in striping, because we type a fair amount of miles in the road. So we just wanted to, we changed the way that looks, and we just want to show the surface treatment of the pavement that was in uh, improved or addressed, treated.
Got it, thank you. And then my last question is
Can I, I think, just one more thing? Kind of in perspective, imagine the wagon trail is only, what, something like three miles? And look at the level of effort and the amount of money that's doing, that's that's that. Those three miles are costing. And so it's it's kind of a hard thing to say is the the dollars, we we spend a lot of money trying to do a lot of works, a lot of work, but it it shows up sometimes as small incremental pieces of physical improvement. So it's it's strange. It's it's 30 miles sounds kind of low, but at the same time, it represents a huge effort.
Uh, maybe in the future, just clarify that so it doesn't seem so vague. Separated out, maybe?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and then my last question or comment, um, so you, in the presentation, you said that you had public engagement at about 1%, and then you made a comment in the presentation about a lack of response and other outreach. Has there been, and I understanding that COVID has been a hiccup to many things, but it's also allowed us to get creative creative in how we engage with the public? Has there been any other thought on how to get those numbers up? I know it's never going to be 100%, but this this 1% somewhat bothers me. And then the amount of questions board members get about roads, um, what can we do to be better at engaging with the public on what's going on with our roads?
Well, that's a puzzle that I've been thinking about. Um, CSA funds are are very limited, so we can't spend too much um, expensive time and 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 money in trying to to fix or trying to create something. But there are, there may be ways that perhaps we set up a website that's just for CSAs that people know how to uh, uh, just communicate with us, just a CSA, maybe a CSA uh, Facebook page or something. There are ways that we could probably tackle that problem that are inexpensive. A a more expensive solution might be to look at a company like AIM, who does this type of stuff, and they could really help us out. But then that's money that the CSAs don't have. But we'll, I'll talk with the people here and see if we could maybe set up a webpage or something that's just dedicated for the CSAs, and they could communicate that way.
Um, um, Robert, just to say that uh, we have an avenue that was put in on the site for people to report issues or problems there. I think that that's generally as good as starting up another site, as long as people label the road and where it's at. With that, you know, it's just getting the message out to the people so that they uh, can can find it. I mean, generally, you just don't get a lot of responses um, with these type of things in general, which is unfortunate. Because, you know, when it comes down to it, when their cars are breaking down because of potholes in the road, you know, that's that's when it hurts their pocketbook and they want to say something. But, you know, prior to that, they don't make the comments.
There is already a website set up for CSAs, it's just not um, updated. I went to click on it last night and it was undiscoverable, it just did a blank screen. So I think there's stuff out there already. Like, just how do we improve it and then communicate to the public to start using those avenues, including the reporting of the roads? Um, I think I've asked your office multiple times to remind me what the name of the app is um, to get that out. But it, just how do we get that messaging out better? So there's less emails coming to us and it's getting directly to Public Works. Uh, thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
Is there any other board comment? This is an informational item, so there's nothing else. Okay, a public comment?
There's no online public comment.
Okay, and there's no one in the room. So since this is an informational, we'll move on to the next agenda item. Item number 11, cloaks.
Item 11 is an action item brought by Public Works. One, adopt three sets of plans and specifications for the 2021 Road Reservicing and Paving Program consisting of roads in County Service Area 4, Diamond 20, Jenny Lind Road, and Valley Springs. Two, authorize the Director of Public Works to incorporate any final changes into the respective bid documents. And three, authorize the Department of Public Works to solicit formal construction bids.
Yes. Good morning. This uh, item uh, is a continuation of um, the work that was being done last year to treat the roads. Uh, some of the roads that we were working on last year needed a more robust treatment than simply a micro surface or a simple treatment. They needed actual um, road-based repair. Our Jen has identified with her staff the actual location of where these roads need to be prepared. Um, uh, and she prepared the cost estimates and uh, plans for this work. So now with this, we could go out and solicit bids from contractors. This is a little bit different than using JOC. We're hoping to uh, control costs better with this effort. Um, due to the nature of the work that's involved, we needed to have a bit better control than just having the JOC contractor go and do whatever they were going to do. Um, we're going to get a better product going this way and hopefully uh, better costs. Let's see here. This uh, you can see the plans in there, the the uh, plans and specs. We should be getting out into the advertising or soliciting for the bids on the end of the week, beginning of next week, trying to get something back to the board with a contract in March so that construction is early spring or later than beginning of May.
Any board comment? Supervisor Stoppa?
A couple of questions. Um, this goes off the paving schedule that was last revised during 10/21/2020. I'm looking at the item here. Um, a lot of these were pushed back because there was work done by one utility or another to 21/2022 from 2020/2021. Um, on this list, I I can understand uh, there's more utility work for Hart-Vixen and Baldwin Streets. So that's pushing it back some years coming forward. But we have Silver Rapids on here, which, is it on there? I I missed it. Never mind. I was going through, I was looking for it, I missed it earlier. I retract what I was going to say, Robert. Mr. Toffinelli found it for me.
Are there any other board comments or questions? Okay, seeing that, is there any public comment? Do you have some?
There's no online public comment?
Okay. So with that, I'm bringing it back to the board, is there a motion?
All right. It was on a different map. Uh, so item 10. Um, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion, or no, I'm sorry, item 11. Uh, to adopt the recommendation as proposed by Public Works.
Is there a second?
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So to confirm, we have motion made by Supervisor Stoppa and second by Supervisor Toffinelli, followed by all ayes.
Good. Thank you. Okay, next um, is agenda item number 12, clerk.
Item 12 is an action item brought by the Administrative Office. Dissolve the Animal Services Shelter and Calaveras County Jail Ad-Hoc Committee.
Ms. Van Laat. Looking at it, okay. Um, and good morning, members of the board, Madam Chair, Krista Van Laat from the Administrative Office. The item for you, um, just is regarding the ad hoc committee that was created by your board this past spring of 2021. Uh, it was formed for both animal services and jail repairs, both historical um, necessities as well as current ongoing issues. So um, we have met on multiple occasions. The recommendation at this point is to go ahead and disband the committee as I feel like, and I I believe the consensus is that we've gotten to the point where those uh, projects have seen some some movement and can now be handled separately. Um, it would be up to your board whether you wanted to form separate committees for each of those um, ongoing uh, capital improvement uh, projects. That said, at this point, um, the recommendation is to go ahead and and dissolve the ad hoc, which, just as a reminder, is intended to be of limited duration and nature. Um, and the committee would be automatically dissolving in the next, I believe, two, two to three months. Are there any questions?
Supervisor, maybe?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Um, why, what's uh, what's changed? Where are we at with these projects? Why are we dissolving it?
So the projects in general, I can give a brief update. So um, while no formal action has been taken by the ad hoc committee with respect to putting out a bid uh, with respect to animal services, there has been movement of that committee. There has been, and there is actually, I believe, scheduled for either Wednesday or Thursday of this week, a tour of the Tracy facility. The Twoloming facility has been toured. We have been working with our um, project manager, who is a consultant for the county, as well as Supervisor Toffinelli on um, ideas for moving that forward. So we are in a position to go ahead and do so, um, once we have a consensus internally. That said, um, the same is true with respect to the jail, where our current issues have been and are being addressed that are contemplated in this year's current CIP. Um, we have a plan for the next major. In fact, working on a contract, I believe, now. Ms. Nikotero, please correct me if I'm wrong there, uh, with respect to the next project for the jail, which is regarding waterproofing, external waterproofing, uh, which has been an issue. So um, given that this committee was going to um, automatically disband the, and given the relative states of of the different projects, it seems like at this point, it's not efficient to continue as an ad hoc, and the recommendation is to disband it. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, I mean, we formed this committee, what was it, Gary, four years ago, three years ago?
No, um, actually, less than a year ago. Uh, the prior facilities ad hoc committee already disbanded.
Okay, so regardless of what the name of it is, it was just formed because projects simply weren't getting done.
Mm-hmm.
And we had to figure out some way to hammer down and get things moving. So as we disband this, when will we, when will we see final plans or plans for moving forward on the animal shelter, for example? Jail's ongoing, I imagine that's going to be the rest of all of our careers.
That is correct.
But the animal shelter, unfortunately, the animal shelter, when are we going to see that?
Um, Assistant.
Hi.
Yeah, thank you.
Good morning, Summer Nikotero from Administration. Uh, we have actually a whole project plan that we put together for a timeline on that. And so um, with the ad hoc committee, it obviously is something that we would discuss in those meetings. Without the ad hoc committee, we can move forward and not have to wait for meetings to make our decisions on every step of that process. Um, I've spoken with Supervisor Toffinelli at length about the metal buildings and what we plan to undertake for animal services, and I feel like that project can move forward very rapidly. So I would estimate that the $600,000 we have budgeted for this year, we would be very close to spending within this year if we can get moving on this right away.
When are we going to get to see it? Animal shelter plan?
So we do have
We're not going to have the ad hoc, it's us, so when do we see it?
So we do have to go through the design process and make a decision on the site plan and the size of the building. And so those conversations um, should be fairly quick, and then we could select an engineer to do the design for us.
Okay, they still didn't give me a time.
And and we'll bring that back to board as soon as possible.
Plans and specs will be brought back, have to come to the board before they're put out to bid.
Okay, but what timeline, as soon as possible is not a timeline. Is that a month from now? Is that a month from now? Is that too much? Is that six months?
So based on the conversations that I've had with, uh, engineering availability in our area, we're looking at six to eight weeks on getting that design completed.
So we'll see it in the next two months or so?
Correct.
Thank you. This is, this is, Gary and Maria, you've served on this committee. This is what you guys think is the right thing to do?
Um, yeah, I do. It's either that, I, I, I would, I would be, I would have to be taken off this committee if you guys decide to continue it. I don't wish to stay on it. But to me, disband it, it's not going to hurt anything. I think it would be fine.
Okay. And if it's not, we could always reconstitute it.
Correct.
Gary, any other supervisor comment? Public comment?
There's no online public comment?
Okay, bring it back to the board for a motion.
I would move this item, Madam Chair.
Second, Madam Chair.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Okay. Any nay?
Nay.
Okay. Four one.
So we have, um, Supervisor Top, uh, Topinelli is our mover. Seconded is Supervisor Stoppa. Four ayes and Supervisor Callaway is a nay.
Thank you. Next is agenda item 13, cloak.
Item number 13, action item, Clerk of the Board of Supervisors.
Item 13, action item, Clerk of the Board of Supervisors, appointment of applicants to serve on various committees, commissions, advisory boards, and county service areas. So we do have various, um, committees that are brought to you today, and just two of the committees actually have two applicants that will need to be reviewed.
Is there any comment from board members, um, with the two committees that have, um, multiple applicants? I believe one of them is-
So for Parks and Rec Commission, we have one vacancy for District 4, and the applicants are Dina McCapie and Allison Contreras.
That's all you, Madam Chair. Here, Madam Chair, that's all you.
Thank you.
Um, my recommendation is, um, based on conversations with the applicant. Um, I had not had any other conversations with, the other one, um, would be Allison Contreras. Is there any other supervisor, there's another, what's the second one?
The other one is the Air Pollution Control Hearing Board, for the one vacancy, uh, term ending December 31st, 2024. Um, two applicants, Thomas Mayer and James Jones.
I believe we are going to push that out-
Okay.
To, um, another meeting.
Do, do we need to vote on that, Sarah?
Um, I, I think that a clerk's practice typically has been to, um, ask for a motion if we're moving it to a date certain, if we're just going to take it, um, off for now. Um, I don't know that it matters. You could, you could certainly vote on postponing it.
Well, before we vote, I need to push it back out to public comment, but is there any other comments with the applicant from the board? No, do you have none? Is there any public comment?
There's no online public comment?
Okay.
So I think, I'm sorry, just Madam Chair, I think what the board would really be doing if you're looking to take action on part of this item but not the other, is, um, someone would just make a motion on the part that you are doing and could ask to continue to remain there.
Okay. There a motion?
Uh, who, who are you asking for District Board?
Allison Contreras.
Okay, I'll make a motion to appoint Allison Contreras and to, uh, table or postpone the air pollution board appointment until a time to be determined later.
We also need to approve, um, Ms. Radjo.
Well, that, that, I, yeah, I understood.
Okay.
And, and other appointments that are filled or only have one applicant, please feel free to put them in the position.
Thank you.
Is that clear enough, Ms. Edwards?
It was clear to me, uh, so long as it's clear to the clerk, then I think we're good.
Yes.
Madam Clear?
I am clear.
Okay.
Okay.
If we're approving the other one, it was Allison on the last, and we're going to be air pollution control, um, board until further date.
Right, not making an appointment to that board at this time.
Okay, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All nay?
Okay, so just to be clear again, item 13, we have motion by Supervisor Stoppa to approve all single applicants, to approve Allison Contreras for the District 4 Parks and Rec Commission, and to postpone Air Pollution Control Hearing Board to a future date. And seconded by Supervisor Topinelli.
Correct, thank you.
You're welcome.
And with that, next on our agenda is supervisor announcement, and I will start to my last, Supervisor Callaway.
Tomorrow, I'll be going on a tour of the Tracy Animal Shelter with, um, people from, I think, some people from Focus, and I'm not sure if our CAO is coming or not. And, um, then next week, I have an Area 12 Agency on Aging meeting. That's all, thank you.
Supervisor Giamendi?
Thank you. I've already updated this board on the earlier item on the Golden State Connect Authority. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to speak to any of you offline. Um, but we're making progress, it'll come together.
Right, Chair Topinelli?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, yes, yesterday, um, Maria and I both attended the Central Sierra Child Support Agency meeting. And last night, we were here in this boardroom, um, till about 7:30, uh, with LAVCO. And part of, the major portion of that meeting discussion was on, on CSDs and some of the things that, uh, there's a, a report out, if you go to the website of LAVCO website, you see the report out on, um, the nine CSAs that are out there, uh, CSDs that are out there and the conditions, um, that they're, they're in. Um, we had that conversation. I brought up that, um, we will be having a study session on CSDs that, uh, a man had brought up at our last meeting on Tuesday of last week. Um, and that, um, I asked Mr. Benoit if he would be willing to be part of that, uh, study session. And, um, he agreed to it, so I told him that, uh, our CAO would be contacting him on that date, that, uh, we would be having that study session. And that's all I have to report.
I'll have many things to report on the next regular meeting. Thank you, I have nothing to report.
And I have nothing to report. And with that, so have a good day. Thank you.